I think we'll forego the pledge of allegiance. I don't have a flag available. But we will call roll. If you would, please, Lori. Hey Lori, you're muted.
Sorry about that. Councilmember Rainville?
Mary, you're muted.
Present.
Councilmember Blake?
Here.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Present.
Member Brian?
Here.
Mayor Pealan?
Here.
And we'll start by approving the agenda for tonight. Any changes, modifications?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I have a couple changes. One is, two are just, three are questions. In regards to the, the public hearing that we're having for the taxation, there's nowhere on the agenda where we're going to adopt those resolutions. So what is council's thought as to when we're going to do that? And then there isn't on the agenda.
Mary, Mary, let me tell you on that first question before I get to your second one. We, we just discussed that. We'll, we'll have the opening of the truth and taxation hearing. We'll take comments, we'll close the hearing, and then we will vote on the resolutions 65 and 66. So that will be. Okay, the next item?
The next items were the business subsidy agreement. Again, maybe it's just a, a miss on the, on the agenda, but we don't have it listed that we're going to adopt the resolutions. So we just need to make sure and adopt those resolutions.
And I have noted on my item nine on the public hearing, that again, we would open, close, and then adopt resolution. We would address resolution 2020-72. And then item 10 I had is the EDA grant, the road and transit funding grant. And it's resolution, resolution 2020 without a number on it yet, but that would be at the end of the public hearing as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next thing I have is what are council's thoughts? Right now, we have those two public hearings separated out. What are council's thoughts of doing them together? Rather than, and doing them right after seven o'clock? Somehow take a, a good break point there? Or are we?
And, and I believe you're talking about item 8F ordinance fee schedule needs to be have a public hearing? And, and then the public hearing for the city? Are those the two you're talking about? You're muted, Mary.
All right. Did, did you say fee structure first?
Yes.
And then, okay, yes.
So the public hearing for the fee schedule, which is 8F. And then number nine, the public hearing for the business subsidy. You want to put those back to back soon as we can after seven?
I, I would, because if there's anybody here for just those items. But it's up to council to decide. Also.
Sorry, who's still talking? Mary?
I stopped.
Okay. Counsel, you okay with putting those public hearings together at seven o'clock?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Who was that? Councilmember Brian?
Linda said yes.
So I'll give you a thumbs up. We still can't see you. Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Brian?
Yeah, my video, I don't know what's going on my video, and I don't have, I'm sure you don't want me to, don't, do not want me to leave to try to figure it out, so.
No, that's true.
The only challenge I have with changing the public hearings is they were posted for seven o'clock.
Yes, and, and so what Mary was saying is after seven o'clock, put the, the two together, the the fee schedule and the business subsidy, the, the other one, the six o'clock would stay at six o'clock.
Okay, yeah, so I'm just trying to get clarification. So the ones that were posted for seven o'clock need to stay at seven o'clock?
Correct. Okay.
And Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Under consent agenda, item A. It has, we're approved council minutes for November 10th and December 3rd. And I'm not seeing any December 3rd minutes in the packet, so should that be removed?
I noted the same thing, so yeah, we should. If they're not in the packet, we should remove that as approval, because we haven't seen those yet.
And then item F under consent. That we pull that and put it under council items A. Add a council item A.
All right, anything else?
I, I have one more. Item 10, which would be for good of the council or for the greater good. And then adjourning would be 11.
All right. Counsel, follow all that. Consent agenda, remove meeting minutes 12, 3 from the list. Move item 3F to council item A. And then add greater good. And at seven o'clock, we can put both public hearings back to back. Anything else on the agenda?
Not from me, Mr. Mayor.
Seeing and hearing none, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I moved to approve the agenda as amended.
So we have a second. Second. Motion, a second. All those in favor. I guess on, on these, we take a roll call, Lori, so.
Councilmember.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Mayor Pealan?
Motion passes. So we will now open our first public hearing. And this is the truth taxation hearing. This is a required hearing. The council has reviewed the primary budget, submitted the budget in September. Again, reviewed it at a workshop previously here in, in December. And have noted that no changes have been made to the budget proposed that was sent to the county in September. So we are opening the public hearing. Again, it's 6:11 on December 8th, 2020. Public hearing is open. Is anybody here to speak to the taxation issue? If you are, please unmute or raise your hand. You know how to use the raise your hand? All right. I am hearing no questions on the taxation, truth and taxation. I'm seeing no activity on the screen. So, going once, going twice. We will close the truth and taxation hearing. And we will put forth resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Brian?
I'd make a motion to approve resolution, resolution 2020-65, adopting the budget for the year of 2021.
And the motion, do we have a second?
I second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, we'll take roll call vote.
Mayor Pealan?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Member Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
I have eyes, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution 2020-66, adopting a levy for the year 2020, collectible in 2021.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
One, just a small correction to the resolution as presented to council is that it's for the city of Now Then, not the city of Anoka.
Oh, down at the bottom.
Thank you.
My apologies. I am so sorry. I never saw that.
All right, with that correction, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, roll call vote.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Mayor Pealan?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Member Brian?
Aye.
I have eyes, the motion carries.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
A second.
I second it.
Councilmember Blake, seconds. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda as amended. Roll call. Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Member Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian? Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
I have eyes, motion carries. So we have an, an opportunity for floor items, and this is for people that are in attendance online here. And this would be items that something somebody wants. And go be recognized by. We'll give you three minutes to see your.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, this is Jason Alder.
All right.
Sorry, I don't know how to raise my, I don't know how to raise my hand on this tool yet, so. I live at 20299 Inglewood Boulevard Northwest.
All right.
I would ask that the city council move to remove the agenda items for the road and bridge and people committees and the planning and zoning changes until January. So I can get in and be part of the discussion as part of an active council member that's coming in in January. I think as a current planning and zoning committee member, I would add some value to discussion. I'm not aligned to the proposed changes that have been outlined by Councilmember Rainville. And I want the ability to discuss those before they go in and get voted on. And also with the road and bridge and park committees. I guess my belief is we should look to understand what the charter of those committees are and how they could work with Lori and have some discussion on that as well. So it feels like they're added fairly late into the agenda. The city and the town hasn't got a chance to review those and talk to the committee members and the community. So I view we should move that so we can get some more input. And I would, again, feel I need to be part of the discussion for the planning and zoning changes, because I'm not aligned to them.
Thank you. Any additional? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the next item, item five, the sheriff's report. Commander Heath, welcome.
Well, good evening, everyone. I just wanted to, I, I have a quick update tonight. And just a couple of things I wanted to point out. The calls for service were sent out to the council, or excuse me, to, to the city, and I'm sure Lori distributed them to the council. But in the month of November, deputies responded to 128 calls for service in the city. And 19 of those were to bar none. In one of the events, I ended up calling the mayor and, and letting him know of an incident. We've had several disturbing events up there, and I know I brought this up in the past to the council. But on the 30th, deputies were called to bar none regarding an incident where there was a resident there who was suicidal. By the time our deputies got there, the scene was very chaotic, and, and I would describe it as out of control. We ended up having 15 squad cars at bar none to respond to this incident. To the point where we had help from the city of St. Francis, the city of Ramsey, and the city of Anoka to assist us. And I know I've tried to paint a picture before of how some of these things are getting out of control at that facility. But I just wanted to go through a, a couple of the comments that were written by the staff that were there that night, if I could do so, Mayor. Okay.
Yes, you may. Sorry, I was, I was muted, so.
Okay. So the original call that deputies responded there to was of a, of a suicidal resident. When our deputies got there and were dealing with that person, that person became uncooperative. And then another resident ran out of an unlocked door of the facility. We had another deputy chase that person down and get them back under control. And while he was escorting her back to the facility, she turned and spit into his face. And while he was ultimately able to get her secured in a squad car, and he went back in to assist the other deputies that were dealing with the other resident that was now out of control inside of the facility. And then other residents from the facility began to exit the building, even though the staff were trying to hold the door shut. Ultimately, everything spilled outside into the yard. Our staff ended up calling for emergency assistance several times to help get this under control. And ultimately, while outside and dealing with multiple people that were out of control, there was a resident that got around, got outside of the facility and was actually looking like he was gonna sneak around the backside of our deputies in the dark and try to attack them from behind. And an officer from St. Francis saw this and intervened and took them into custody. And, and this continued, the behavior continued to spiral out of control, and an additional female started to get combative at the location and ultimately kicked a paramedic that was there attending to other people. And then another resident inside of the facility became out of control and was being restrained by staff members. And as this all unfolded, ultimately, it, it got under control. But like I said, it took 15 law enforcement officers to respond to the incident to get it under control. And ultimately, there were four juveniles that were arrested and transported to secure detention. And then a fifth juvenile went to Mercy Hospital to be dealt with with mental health issues. And after all is said and done, that person that kicked the paramedic and was having a mental health issue will be ultimately being charged for assaulting that paramedic. One of the juveniles will be charged for assaulting our deputy for spitting in their face. And then all of those individuals are being charged with third degree riot in Minnesota here. So I just try to paint the picture, and I'm working on getting some of the body worn camera video and audio from that scene to present it to the council, so you guys can see some of the things that are actually going on up there versus just me trying to explain them to you. And if, you know, and, and just to outline, we had multiple other calls there through the month. There was 19 calls over the course of the month, and several of them involved people being out of control. One of them who, when she was taken back into custody after running from the facility, she fled from multiple deputies. Once she was put in a squad car, she was out of control and started trying to kick the rear windows out of the squad car. And that person ultimately was put on a hold as well for mental health issues. And it's, unfortunately, as we've talked before, this is very difficult for us. You know, this is a facility that's operating in the city, and it's taking quite a few resources for us to try to handle what's going on there. All while, all this, this facility in this location is being paid to treat and, and house these, these people. So I know it's something I've been talking about quite often, and I spoke with the mayor at length about this. But I wanted to make sure that the council got a clear, another clear picture of the things that are still going on up there. Nothing is changing and nothing is getting better. And I can stop now, and if there's any comments or questions on that incident, I'd be glad to take them.
Commander, you said 19 incidents. Would, would this, with the 15 squads there, would that be considered an incident?
Yes, that is, that is one call for service.
Okay. I had a call from a resident today, saw a a, a young man walking across Norris Lake from one of the buildings at the facility. I don't know that Norris Lake is quite ready to walk on. But they did appear to be walking from the facility up towards Norris Lake Road. I advised if they ever saw that again, they need to call 911, because, again, junior high age people are not typically walking away from a facility like that. I don't know if we got a call on anybody leaving today or he can be recovered, but they stayed to make sure that the person made it across the lake and didn't fall in, but they didn't think to call until later, and they mentioned it to me, so.
Sure, and we did have somebody use the lake yesterday to, to run from the facility as well. But we didn't get a call that I'm aware of today.
All right. Council members, other questions for the committee on this incident or any of the other information that he has on the report?
Commander Heath, Ms. Linda Blake, are we in contact with the corporate or whatever, Volunteers of America? Are we talking to them about these issues so that they know what's going on, not just the people at Bar None?
Well, and that's something I was working on previously with Planner Stockman, and I'm not, I know she's been in contact with the corporate. I'm not exactly sure where that has gone. But in the past, we have met multiple times with leadership from Volunteers of America. And unfortunately, throughout all of those meetings, we're still in the same spot today as we were with all of those. And what I've spoken with the mayor is I think we're, you know, unfortunately, it's good so they understand what's going on, but we need some changes there to truly change the activity that are having, happening at the facility. But maybe, maybe Planner Stockman has further information on contact with the leadership from there.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
Nothing specific related to the incidents as of yet. We are, we are and have been working to have Volunteers of America make application for the inner muse permit, who have moved the school from St. Francis into Now Then. And as part of that, I have been collecting information, not only on the history of the facility and the types of clientele there, but also some of these police matters. So the goal is to get everything together, which we are very close to doing, have them apply, and then, and then work with them on addressing these types of things and how, you know, we will be able to attach conditions to any special use permit to address the safety issues.
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to reiterate that, that our last meeting, we did say that any, any meetings that take place regarding Bar None internally or with external parties that I as mayor and Councilmember Blake wanted to be, make sure we are part of those meetings, so.
Right.
Councilmember Rainville?
Mr. Mayor, to Ms. Stockman, I guess a month ago, we asked about the, where we are in getting the documentation as to what they are allowed to do there based on the initial CUP or IUP at the time. It's now a month later. How close are we to getting that information?
We're very close, but I'm waiting for an updated survey from volunteers. They, you know, I do need some input too, and we need to meet, the intent is to get the info, meet with Mayor Pealan and Ms. Blake with Attorney Rupi, and make sure that his thoughts align with mine as far as processing of everything. And then we can move forward. We never have found the original CUP that was issued. So we are going by records, whether it be minutes. You know, there's a little from the city, a little from Anoka County. We're doing the best we can to collect that information. To date, we have proven or shown that there was a school there to begin with. It then moved up to St. Francis for 27 years and then moved back in 2018. The types of clientele, as you know, have changed over the years. It started out being more of a facility for autistic and disabled children and has kind of evolved. So I'm trying to get some of those details as to, you know, who made these decisions to change, what were the changes exactly? But we don't have good records, as most townships don't, and during that early time, so.
I guess back to my question, where are we, when can we expect a report as to whatever we can find as to what was originally agreed to, to be allowed on that site? The piece that they want to apply for something else, that's secondary. I think we need to focus on what are they allowed to do. And we need to know that, we should have known that quite a while ago. And again, this piece of a new school there is secondary. I, I think we need to deal with the first issue is what is happening there now? What are they allowed to do? And if they're doing things that they are not allowed to do, have them cease and desist. Again, the secondary piece would be if, if they want to apply for something that they currently don't have a permit to do, then working with the mayor and Councilmember Blake and Attorney Rupi, determine what the best. I, I believe we need to get that information, and we need it now. I mean, 30 days ago, we were, the last council meeting, we were, you know, almost there. Well, we're still almost there, but we're not. there, well, we're still almost there, but we're not there yet, and we don't have any information.
She's kind of telling us that there isn't that much information out there that she's struggling to find. Sounds like there wasn't a lot of good record keeping in the past and what's been going on out there, so I could, dilemma.
It is a dilemma.
Something out of the air, you know?
Okay, hold it. One person talking at a time, please be recognized by the presiding officer.
Mr. Mayor.
I will say that if there's not a lot of information from me, what we have, if there's not a lot, then let's let's sit at the table. I've been to meetings, had at least a dozen meetings involving Barnum over the years with the county, with state, with Volunteers of America onsite, down at the county offices. We've had sheriff's department, police departments. There's a, there's a lot of records, at least on activity. And the concern is, you know, thirty days ago, as Councilmember Rainville said, we were trying to bring this forward, and it seems like we are kind of hung up on making sure they can get their application in. I'm sure the residents nearby are legitimately concerned, but we had nineteen incidents again this month, nineteen, one of them with fifteen officers. We're we're close to making national. And and it seems like there's not an urgency to to bring resolution to this, that it's commensurate with the the risk that we have here. As if I heard Commander Heath right, one of the the people in this last incident was taken in, and previously, in the month of November, a person was taken in. And if I recall right from our last meeting, when somebody's taken in by the county, by the sheriff, that hospitalization is being paid for by the county and by the state department, while America continues to take revenue for that client. So there's got to be some urgency, because we're paying all the costs and we're taking all the risk right now. And I have not seen significant improvement in the security. Now, if we find that the only way we can 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 require that is through conditions on some type of use, so be it, but we need to get to the point where we're meeting. And I know last month, we were collecting data and hoped to have some kind of meeting, so I'm not sure where where we go from here, but whatever data you have, we should get it together and decide who needs to be at that table to talk.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Yes, several issues or, you know, thoughts here. It is a sensitive issue. The history in the files is limited, and and you are correct in saying that our only way in and our only way to establish conditions or possibly changes there is to address those in a special use permit. And that's the inkling that I'm getting from Attorney Rupi. There is no CUP which specifies exactly what was approved, so we are in, to some degree, guessing based on other minutes or other records that are out there. It may be a letter from the, you know, onsite supervisor of Barnum at the time. It may be just city minutes or whatever. If you want to move forward, one of the questions is, do you want to do it as a counselor, or are we just talking meetings with Ms. Blake and Mayor Pilon? So there's, I can certainly get you something. The other piece of this is, remember, when you have an application and the, you know, a formal application that is accepted by the city, it's at that time that your consultants can start charging for time, and VOA is responsible for paying for that. So that's another piece of the piece of the puzzle.
I think one of the things that's happened in the past is is depending on which agency at the state was regulating. When we had Department of Corrections, they had some some influence, and so we worked with them. When it was with Health and Human Services, they actually shut the facility down for violations. And so the VOA dropped the those clients and went to just Department of Corrections. Now we're back to dropping corrections and just back to issues. So they're making significant changes. We keep saying we can't do anything because we don't know what the original CUP was, but they're not abiding by any consistency in their CUP. So I I think we need to at least find out where we where we sit. The commander has has agreed to work with us. I know the sheriff himself is interested in what's going on here. His department is extremely at risk here. So I think we need to make some forward motion, and I think it would certainly start with Councilmember Blake and myself, so that we can have a private meeting with the those that are authorizing from the state, whether it's Corrections or Health and Human Services, whether it's counties that are assigning people out here, insurance companies that are paying for clients to be out here. But I think there needs to be a hearty discussion with law enforcement, with the certifying agencies, to see what possibly can be done. And then and then obviously, the attorney will weigh in on what legally can be done and what restrictions are on it. But I think we need to to move quickly here, because another incident like we had this last week is not acceptable. And and it doesn't appear that the responsible parties, the Volunteers of America or onsite at Barnum, if they're interested in doing something about it, are able to at this point. And we want to make sure that we address it before it becomes a major incident, so.
Mr. Mayor.
So that that, go ahead, Councilmember Rainville, was it?
Yes. So I guess I guess I'm going to ask a basic question. Do they have a conditional or interim use or a variant to provide the services that they are providing now? Is there any proof of that?
There is proof, Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Of a conditional use permit being approved by Anoka County approximately late seventies, early eighties. We haven't seen that document. There was an amendment to it in about nineteen eighty-four, maybe eighty-six, around that time. So that's how we know that there was a CUP, because an amendment to it was approved. That's all we have.
So there's evidence of a of a CUP of some sort in existence forty, fifty years ago. There's a thirty-five-year-old amendment to that issued by Anoka County. So the question, what obligation does the city have to an unverifiable fifty-year-old document that the operation has completely changed from whatever they were doing back then? I I know in a dozen years here, it's changed multiple times. So, I mean, that's the question we want to ask. I don't know that we need to take any more, right, unless the council has any more specific questions. We need to determine as a council how quickly we need to move ahead on this, and if we're comfortable with Councilmember Blake and myself working with the sheriff's department, law enforcement in the area, and Planner Stockman and our attorney to get together the responsible parties to come up with some type of plan forward, because this is just unacceptable. So any other council members? Laurie, is that you?
And counsel, can I, I know that you mentioned that you've worked on this for several years, Jeff, and I'm just wondering if maybe you have some documentation you could provide? I've been trying to help Planner Stockman gather information, and it's been very difficult. We've contacted neighboring cities, we've contacted the county, because at one time, a portion of the Barnum facility was considered Oak Grove. St. Francis has been involved. We've been trying to dig for any information we can, and maybe if you have some information on the past years of of what you have found, that might help us as well.
Yeah, that's that's one of the, I'd mentioned to Planner Stockman at our last meeting, that if she was gathering information, I would give her what I what I have from my recollection. I will go back through my, you know, what I have for hard copy files. I didn't have computer records at the time of the meetings, but I can look for hard copy files, because we we met multiple times. I mean, even you and I went out there, Laurie, to to have meetings. And so I think a lot of this promises, and so we expected more follow-up feedback from Volunteers of America. And so with the promises we had, I don't know that we documented it greatly ourselves. But we realized over the years that staff was changing significantly, programs were changing, and whatever documentation we thought they were keeping was disappearing. But I will check through my records.
I'll get on that tomorrow and start scheduling a meeting then, if if that's what you want. If you prefer to wait another few days for the documentation and want to look that over before we schedule a meeting, let me know now.
I I think, you know, hopefully, the documentation is readily available, but certainly before we bring attorneys and and people in at these higher fees, we should have documentation so people come in somewhat prepared for discussion rather than a general, where do we go from here? Here's the documents, and let's formulate a plan, because we'll have a lot of people on the clock doing this. But I would say the sooner the better.
Okay.
And the else from counsel. All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I would like to see what we have in documentation. You say that there's documentation from Anoka County seventies or eighties. It does not sound like there's anything from Now Then, because we never felt this facility was in Now Then. And so, but then I think Ms. Strikes said we don't have a copy of the papers from Anoka County. It was either Ms. Striker or Ms. Stockman. I would like to see what we have, because right now we're blind. And I mean, I think if if a if a business went in down the block and they were doing things that they weren't allowed to do without a CUP or an IUP, we wouldn't allow them to do that. And and I'm, to me, they don't have anything that says they can do something that the city of Now Then allowed them or Burns Township allowed them to do do something. And even if they do, they're doing is not what was agreed upon many, many moons ago.
Yeah, we have, we have, you know, some minutes that prove that the township did know about the facility and what was what what was going on. And there are snippets of, you know, numbers of kids, types of kids. But, you know, we've got mention of safety concerns all the way back to the eighties, and it's just gotten progressively worse, so.
I will say that, you know, initially, when it became a city, and when we contracted with the sheriff for law enforcement services, the understanding was it was an outgrown facility. So initially, the charges for the calls out to the facility, build Oak Grove, and somebody realized that the buildings, all entrances in Oak Grove, the buildings are in Now Then, and so that was changed, and we started getting the sheriff's buildings on that. So I know there is some confusion that way. You know, I think that, you know, we have a meeting coming up later tonight on on a car dealership, and one of the residents brought a packet of information to the planning and zoning, indicating a number of police calls in that area. And if I recall Planner Stockman, that you had said a number of those cars, calls were stolen cars. And and there was mention of this facility being involved in the stealing of the cars. So I I think all of that needs to be put together. If we have police reports from St. Francis, from elsewhere in Now Then, that also indicate activity related to Barnum, we should have that. So you had mentioned in November that you had a, you had been collecting information. It probably would be good to see what you've got right now and what more we need. But I'm guessing that if you've been doing this for a few months, that you probably have quite a stockpile of research that we can at least start with.
Yep, we'll get your reading. It is a lot of reading, and we will see where you want to go from here.
All right. Anything else from the council on that? And Commander Heath, if you could relay that to the sheriff, and and we'll we'll get the information out to interested parties here, and we'll start start a plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your and the council's assistance in this. That's, we're just at the point where we can, we're not going to be able to arrest and deal with all this on the law enforcement side. We're going to need to change behavior and and processes at the facilities. So I do appreciate your and the council's assistance, as well as Planner Stockman and Ms. Strikes' assistance as well.
I think one of the other things that we want to figure out how to deal with in Volunteers of America, because they have changed their, you know, from Department of Corrections was was one thing, but now we're dealing with mental health issues. And the commander and I had a discussion that he'd had with the sheriff himself. One of the reforms that people are calling for across the country in law enforcement is trying to get people that are trained in law enforcement to focus on on law and mental health officials to focus on mental health. We're asking deputies who are trained, not specifically for mental health, to to handle what is specifically mental health issues, and that's primarily what we're seeing out there. So I think that has to be factored in as well, you know, that we have the right response in whatever, if they're going to bring in people that are challenged in the in the mental health area, we need to make sure that the response is appropriate, so we don't have an incident that gets out of, more out of hand than we've had this week, so. Is that fair to say, Commander?
Yes, sir, you're you're exactly right. And I and I only have one last thing for the night that I wanted to close out my report on a positive note, even though yearly at the sheriff's office, we do a Santa night for internally for staff, we're able to have a good partnership with Santa and have him come in, and usually we just have our staff come through and and have an evening with that. And due to the issues surrounding COVID this year, we decided to do a drive-through Santa, and instead of just inviting our staff, we decided to open it up to the public. So last Thursday, we were able to make arrangements with Santa to be at our office and and had some other community partners assist us, and we had a drive-through Santa experience at the office. And we we were there for a little over four hours, and we had a thousand and thirty-four cars come through the sheriff's office to see Santa. And the really cool part of it, that was probably the funnest to see besides watching the kids and and the and the people, and just to put it in perspective, some of them had a two-hour wait to get through the experience, and we didn't hear a single complaint. So that's just how much people are looking for something positive to see. But the biggest takeaway and the funnest thing that I saw is that we were able to collect four thousand and one hundred pounds of food for a food shelf here in the county, and an entire trailer full of toys for Toys for Joy, and and as well as almost a thousand dollars in cash. I think it was eight hundred dollars in cash. It is all going to to the food shelves and the Toys for Joy. So just wanted to close out on a positive note that even though times are tough and we're dealing with a lot of these things, people are still unbelievably generous and good and are willing to give and and help those that are less fortunate, so that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you for that. I do think with the weather that we've had, the the shutdowns that we've had, all the experiences that we haven't had to mark our year, sometimes it's hard to remember we are in December, just weeks from Christmas. And I appreciate the news, appreciate the the work that the sheriff's department was doing and contributing to the community. And so thank you for for reminding us that not all is doom and gloom, and that there are still good things going on out there. We appreciate that, so thank you.
Yes.
Anything else for the sheriff? Looks like you're free to go.
All right, thank you. Happy holidays, everyone.
Thank you, and to you.
Same to you.
All right. Next item we have is, this is public input. This is our. All right. Next item we have is, is, this is public input. This is our, our MS4. So we're required each year to have an opportunity for public input on our MS4 program. Lori, I don't know. There's nothing in our packet. Is there anything else more that you can share on that?
Mayor and council, no, this agenda item is required by our MS4 Stormwater Permit with the MPCA, and it's an opportunity for the public to provide comments on our stormwater program. So what we're required to do is open the meeting to the floor, accept any comments from the public in regards to the adequacy of our stormwater pollution prevention program. And if there are no comments, we move on to the next agenda item.
Is there anybody out there with comments? We will go on to the next, next item.
Mr. Mayor.
So Lori, if you would note that we had the, the public hearings, or the public inputs.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's talking? Councilmember Brian?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to come and make, I just wanted to make a comment for the rest of the council and the mayor that the watershed is looking at, with the MS4 released some new standards for this year. And the watershed, one of our top agenda items is to look at stormwater standards. So, you know, that is part of the, what the MS4 standards are, that we will be using that. The watershed will be determining what, if any changes would be needed and/or required to meet the new state's standards.
And, and is there something for the council's edification and for those that are on that you can give us briefly the MS4 and what the watershed might be considering there?
I, I haven't seen the exact, the, the new standard yet. I would just, it was just mentioned by ACD as part of the watershed, that that's one of the topics of the items that, that will be coming up for discussion is if, if we need to make any changes to the stormwater standards. And they were asked for any city feedback on that. So we've asked our engineer if he has any comments that we can, that we need to be aware of as a watershed, so that we can make sure we're meeting the guidelines. And if there are big changes, then we'll have, we'll bring that information back.
And the, the city has, has engaged our engineering firm, Shane Nelson in particular, but his staff to manage this. There are various reports, publications, public opportunities for input like this tonight to communicate that. Certainly, whatever the watershed can find out and bring back to the council for public distribution would be helpful as well. But it does, all these retention ponds that we see all around the city and all new construction that has to direct water into a retention pond before it goes into the public waterway, all of those become responsibility of the city eventually. And cleanup can be fairly expensive. I know that the MPCA was also proposing a change in funding for those in the council that maybe didn't know it. But we, we currently pay, we have been paying $400 every five years. And the recommendation was to go to $2,000 annually, which is a significant increase to our, to our city budget. So there was a delay in implementing that. I'm not sure where it stands right now. The city has, as previously said, we want to voice our, our disagreement with that increase and want to understand why they would see such a significant increase. So we need to keep an eye on that, make sure that if the MPCA is looking to increase costs, that we're weighing in on, on that and not just accepting it and throwing it in the budget. So. Anything else on the MS4? Seeing and hearing none, we will move on to the next item. We have a couple of RCAs. Councilmember Rainville, you want to handle those?
Mr. Mayor, next on the agenda is planning and zoning. That's what I, on my agenda.
The latest one I got is committee commission structure.
It is? Okay. I don't have that latest one. All right. Let me get to my pile. The first one I submitted back at the, during the workshop, after workshop discussion, I revised it. What I'm proposing is that for our park and rec and road and bridge, that based on previous guidance by our interim city administrator and by information provided by the League of Minnesota Cities staff, that we move to ad hoc committees. And so we would disband the park and rec and road and bridge committee and move to ad hoc committees. I believe an ad hoc committee allows us to have greater input by a larger number of residents, because we would have topic-specific projects that they would be working on, and they would be short-term projects, which I think with people's busy schedules would allow them to participate on a project-specific committee versus a, a long-term, I think our terms are three years, long-term committee, commitment. So I would, I would move that we eliminate the park and rec and road and bridge committees, as referenced in item one of the RCA, and that staff remove all references to the committees from the city documents and website. And that the council approves the formation of ad hoc committees, as referenced in item two of my RCA. And that we would direct the city clerk to work with council members, myself, I would be willing, and, and I'd like to ask Councilmember Blake to develop policy procedures and roles and responsibilities. And, and those final policy procedures and roles and responsibility would be presented by our city clerk at the February city council meeting.
All right. So that's a motion?
That's a motion.
And do we have a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
This is one of the, the topics that, that we discussed at the council and the council workshop the previous week, that we can make our committees more versatile and going forward, so that this would allow that we can cover more topics than just road and bridge and or park and rec committees. And we can still have residents' involvement on the, on the various committees.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
To Councilmember Brian, that's correct. We did talk about being able to expand the items that these committees could, could research, bring forward and research or be referred to by councilor's staff, which I think again helps to broaden the number of residents that could participate in a committee, a short, mostly, most likely short-term committee, and allow them to, to participate in something that they have expertise in. You know, another thing too is we've, with the appointment of Ms. Strike, our, our staff has been refocused. And, and they're doing a lot of the work that those committees did, because the committees got bogged down on the day-to-day activities, maintenance of parks or maintenance of roads, equipment purchases, and, and staff is now focusing on that. And the council has their five-year plant capital improvement plan and road improvement plans. So again, I think this is, gives us the ability to have residents have input into areas that, that they really have interest in. And I think that benefits the city and it benefits the residents.
Any other comments? Seeing, hearing none. We have a motion and a second.
A question, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake, sorry.
I just have one question, and that's what makes us think that we're going to be able to pull these people together so easily? I mean, that's, we're just assuming that everybody wants to serve on a committee because they have a question about what are we doing about this project? And that's my one question. I just, I'm a little apprehensive on the fact that I'm not sure that people are that gung-ho to be part of a committee to do these things. Just because, just that it's, that something should be done about, an area they're concerned about. That's my opinion about this.
Yeah, I, I would say that just because somebody suggests things doesn't mean they necessarily want to be on a committee. But I do, I do understand what Councilmember Rainville's saying is that, you know, in the past, when you signed up for a committee, you know, quite often, you know, a three-year commitment and things that you really had no interest in at all. And the idea with, with an ad hoc committee, when we were talking previously with our previous administrator, that's, that's one of the advantages. You get people that really are interested. You find like interested people. You do research. You get in and you get out, as opposed to, okay, now we're getting on to something I could care less about, but I'm on this committee, so I got to show up and keep doing it. So I think that while somebody may suggest something, they may not necessarily want to serve on the committee, you're more likely to find people that want to serve on that committee if they would like to see that actually accomplished. I think one of the things that came up previously at the park and rec was an archery range. And we have a lot of people that do archery, hunting, archery for target practice. We just couldn't get the committee to have the same excitement that that person did. So I, I actually did visiting for that. And, and when you got the hunters and the archers together and you took them down to where these other cities have these things, there's enthusiasm and excitement. But the majority of the committee didn't have that excitement, so it died. And I, I think it would have been a benefit here. So I think this is an opportunity to get like-minded people together for a short-term project, get the research done and make a recommendation. And then if they don't want to be on the next committee, they don't, then I, I do see that advantage. While we can't guarantee, I do think like-minded people will sign up for short-term as opposed to a long-term and something that may not interest them, except for the one topic. So.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
To address Councilmember Blake, one of the, one of, that, that's always a concern of getting, how to get people involved in it. We have difficulties in Now Then, because we don't have one newspaper. We have, we have, there are some Facebook pages. The city will be getting a Facebook page. We'll be updating our website. So part of the roles and responsibilities and committee structure and, and policy will be to address that and how we address that. And I think a lot of it will be by word of mouth. It'll be by social media. Maybe if Susie Johnson comes in with an, a, a suggestion, and a suggestion with some good, solid background on it, maybe Susie has some friends too that would be interested. But that's part of what we have to design. And so I, I think by doing that, we will bring more people in. But advertising will be, will be an issue, but I think we can get past that. Thank you.
So Councilmember Blake, that Councilmember Rainville suggested that you might be interested in that. Is that something you might be interested in participating in?
I'd, I'd be happy to help with that.
So we have a motion. We have a second. Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
I like the idea of the ad hoc committee. I think there's some things in the parks that we looked at in our tour that some, need some attention. And I think it would be great if we could have a committee take a look at some of those things and make some improvements to our parks. So I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Anything else? Seeing and hearing none. We'll take a vote on the motion on RCA as presented. All those in favor, please have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Mayor Pealun?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Member Rainville?
Aye.
Five ayes, the motion passes.
Thank you, council. I think it's an exciting thing for the city. And if we work hard putting it together, it, it should be very successful. And if it isn't, we can go back. But I, I think it's a good move forward. My second RCA is dealing with the planning and zoning. And this also is based on some recommendations from our previous interim administrator and from the League of Minnesota Cities. And what I would, what I've proposed in the packet is the actual section out of the, the city code, and then the updated planning and zoning policy on commission structure, meeting order, and general procedures. There are two spelling errors in two places. It has police and not policy. And I'm sorry, but that's from my former employment. So. What I'm suggesting is that we, I would move that we reduce the committee numbers from seven to five. And then also make the changes that are listed below. And I don't, if people want me to read each one, there are a few of them. Some of it is just housekeeping. But the, the two big ones are the lowering of the committee size, which I think will help us be able to maintain quorum. And then that the city council is who appoints the chair and the co-chair. The other item on there are, are housekeeping. And taking some of the policy pieces out of city code and putting them into the policy. So if I have a second to that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Mary, how are people appointed to?
Joel, we need a second first before we go to discussion. So.
Okay.
Okay, Linda seconds. Okay, now Joel, your question.
Okay. Mary, how do we find a chair and vice chair currently?
To Councilmember Greenberg, currently the committee selects the chair and co-chair.
Okay.
It, it was recommended by both the interim administrator and the League of Minnesota Cities that the council handle that, as this committee is representing them. And so they should have that input into who is chairing that committee.
Right.
Joel, just, I just want to say too, on the, from, after our workshop, I went on the league site, the League of Minnesota Cities, and actually was referred to the state statute. And, and I'm not, Mary didn't mention it, but actually they, they state right in statute, the city council does pick the commission members, that state statute. So.
Well, that was my, that was my number one concern. My other concern would be knocking it from seven down to five members. By and large, I agree what I see, with what I see here. I did kind of think it would be advantageous to have Jason Elders comment on it when he comes in in January, being that he just came from the planning and zoning. So I thought it would be a moment for him as a new member to be able to speak, or a new council member to be able to speak on this. So I, I would, I would suggest that we move it to January.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
Uh, no. I'm gonna keep it to council at this point.
Okay, sorry.
Other councilmembers, you know, and I appreciate Councilmember Greenberg, your, your comments and, I, I do think that this council, having served on the commission for a number of years, some of us before we were council members. I was on it before we ever in the city and had been liaison for a number of years. And I do think that there is good background. I do agree with the the five being easier to provide a quorum, as I mentioned at the workshop. One of the, to my rec, to my recollection, we have not had a problem with a five-member council ever having a quorum. So I think if you got the right members and the right commitment, that the quorum is not an issue, but it's easier to do with five than it is to do with seven. I also think that the discussion is, is if, again, if people come prepared come to the meetings as, as scheduled, a five is very effective. And without bogging down. So, but I do think this council has enough experience either being on the committee for quite some time or participating in all the meetings for the past number of years, so. I would think it's, it's reasonable to make that decision at this point, so. I appreciate your input. Is there somebody else that want to say something?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I think one of the things we do have to look at is familiarizing ourselves with what our city code says and what these policies and procedures say. In those policies and procedures, addresses darn near everything that comes in front of the, the commission. And some of the things we talked about on the meeting last Thursday, and, and it talked about quorum and calling to order and things like that. Those are all addressed in that committee. When I originally started reworking this, I, I, I talked about starting on time and having quorum on time and keeping quorum throughout the midi, the, the meeting. Those things are all pretty much addressed in the policy already. So we need to, as one, a council, and second, as a commission, that we read those documents, familiarize ourselves with them, and follow them. And I think that's for everybody's betterment that, that we do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Are residents still allowed to sign up for the planning and zoning and get on to it by virtue of applying? Or does each, or does each resident have to be approved?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
The city currently has a policy, I don't, it was prior to Ms. Striker's appointment, so I don't know if she has it, I do have it, as to how committee members are chosen for committees. And it's basically the city will advertise openings that will apply, be interviewed by both the P and Z and the city council, and then be appointed by the city council. I've been reading additional documents that, that have talked about process, and so I'm going to look at that. But, but we do currently have a process that a resident can apply, interview, and be appointed by council.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing, hearing, seeing and hearing none, we have a motion and a second. So we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rainville?
Yes.
Mayor Pealyn?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
No.
Councilmember Blake?
No.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Motion carries, three, two.
Thank you, council.
Move on to planning and zoning.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
As we discussed earlier during the adoption of the agenda, should we move to the, to public hearings?
I'm sorry, yes, it is after seven, we can do that. So we will go to item eight F. Open public hearing at seven twenty on the review of the ordinance 2020-06, the 2021 fee schedule. And that portion of it, which can be addressed, and there's a portion of it I think still needs to be updated and corrected. So do we have anybody here to weigh in on the fee schedule as presented? So council want to make any comments on the fee schedule?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember?
I'm just wondering if, at, at the workshop, we talked about whether or not the fee schedule we received was the most current version. I, I know Lori's had a lot on her plate, and so I don't know if she's had a time to check on that. But prior to doing any additional work on this, other than what we're going to prove today, if we could get a, find out what, if we have the most current version, I made some revisions to it. And again, I don't know if Ms. Striker's had an opportunity to look, because I know her plate's been full and I've been part of that.
Mayor and council, I have not had a chance to pull up and find out what the fee schedule. It's on the list.
Thank you. So at, so at this point, if we want to, is there any comments on the fee schedule? Seeing and hearing none, we will close the public hearing portion of this and accept a motion to, we talked about at the workshop, identifying those things that are necessary to, to keep our operations going that, that we know are accurate. And then can have clerk treasurer review the rest of the document for accuracy and bring it back separately. But we wanted to get in the changes that we know are happening with the building official. So does anybody want to identify the portion of the fee schedule they would like to approve at this point?
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
Councilmember Rainville.
Councilmember Rainville?
I, I believe what we would be approving is under, I'm trying to find the number of it. It's letter C, building permits and inspections and going through down to development fees. And then Ms. Stockman, I believe, had, we had to fill in a blank on the dwellings or other, other buildings moved into or within the city. And I think there was a blank there, if Ms. Stockman could answer that. Or else it was, yeah, buildings moved into the city.
You need a security amount, so it typically is a percentage of the total structure cost, usually 150%, although it wouldn't have to be that high.
What, what have you seen? You say sometimes usually 150%? What, what's typical?
150% is typical of the structure being moved, you know, the amount to improve it and bring it up to code. So they would escrow that amount until the project's completed, and then they would get that back.
What, what would that typically be? What's, so with the cost of the house plus all renovations and, and moving?
Yeah, well, yeah, that's a good point. I mean, a house, well, it's already built, but it would be, you know, foundation, if they're possibly reciting it or doing anything like that to bring it, although siding wouldn't be up to code, but I'm thinking of more of the code-related items that are required for them to relocate in the city. For a garage, it's more typically a garage or something that's moved or an accessory building that we see more than the residents. So we could also have the, you know, building official recommended amount or something, but I think if you phrase it 150% of the improvements, required improvements, that would be the way to go.
And I think that'd be a little clearer, so.
Right.
But we want to modify that to 150% of the improvements, required improvements, I'm sorry. And you include moving, grading, construction, demolition, exterior finishing costs.
Right, anything typically required, just as if someone were building it, it has to meet our, all our ordinances.
Council okay with that amendment? All right, and right above that, in the temporary, temporary occupation permit, we had a question as to the escrow, if that could come out of the security deposit.
The way, we had one this recent, this past summer, and we required $2,500 from that applicant. And the way we did it was we deducted my cost from that escrow amount. So you could either have a separate escrow amount and the security deposit, or just keep moving forward as we are, if you're all right with that. I mean, it takes away from a little bit when you're deducting costs, but it's still a chunk of change which will motivate people to complete the project on time.
I, I think that's reasonable to keep doing what we've been doing.
Okay.
Make, make this reflect that.
Okay. $2,500 then total for the escrow and the security.
Council okay with that? I had a thumbs up, thumbs up.
Yes.
Danielle, I'm gonna guess you got a thumbs up right now.
Well, Mr. Mayor, honestly, I don't have the documentation for what is or isn't changing, so I'm at a loss because it wasn't included in the packet, so I'm not following exactly what's being changed and what's not changed, because I don't have it in front of me.
So this was part of the fee schedule?
I understand that the fee schedule was not included in the packet. The new packet that came out, I don't see the fee schedule there.
Do you happen to have your workshop packet? Because that's where I got mine from.
Right, well, that's where I'm going to next. So you'll have to bear with me a little bit, because I don't have the paper copy in front of me.
If you're gonna look electronically, we're on one dash thirteen.
So for Councilmember Brian, we didn't have an amount established. We had an established process that we were using, but it wasn't by ordinance or fee schedule, so we are proposing that amount because it's what we've used in the past and it has worked well for us.
All Dan's looking at out, does anybody have anything additional? What the mayor would be proposing would be? Starting in section C, page one dash eight through twelve, is it? How far are we gonna go, Mary?
Mr. Mayor? I believe from, from the, from the workshop, it was all of the building, which would end after other inspections and fees, so right above, which would be item C. I don't know if the numbers are correct here, but, and let me jump over to the, the items we just discussed with Ms. Stockman, because I don't believe she, there were any changes within the subdivision plating, comprehensive plan amendment. Were there, there were no changes in there, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And we wouldn't have to re-adopt those. It's just anything associated with the building fees and then this moving of a structure into the building or into the city.
Building, so item C, building permits and inspections, A through O. Residential field, reg, excuse me, residential fees, A through C. Is anything on the commercial fees? A through I, other inspections and fees, A through K. And then item nine and ten. Ms. Stockman, is that the way you see it?
Yeah, that's correct.
Hey, council follow that then, and your, Councilmember Brian, were you able to find that?
Yep, I already had it on my recycle pile, so I just got it off of there.
So you saw item nine, we take the escrow security deposit would be combined there? Is that right, Planner Stockman?
Right, for $2,500, correct.
And then on 10A, it would have 150% of the required improvements as the escrow. Anything else on the fee at this point?
No.
We have a motion, we have a motion, so I will close the public hearing and will accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I move that we approve the changes to the fee sched, which are in chapter section two of the city code and as it discussed.
I have a second.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any other discussion? Seeing, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Pealyn?
Aye.
Five ayes, the motion carries. We will open our next public hearing. It is public hearing for the proposed adoption of business subsidy criteria and proposed granting of a business subsidy agreement. Public notice was served on that. And so we'll open the public hearing. And anyone here to speak to that public hearing?
Hi, this is Brandon Ebert, 9157 Burns Parkway.
Hello, Brandon.
Hi, I'd like to thank everyone Hi, I'd like to thank everyone for working on this and bringing it forward. It's a great opportunity to help incentivize bringing internet into Now Then, which has been such a constant problem. You know, watching WebEx from planning and zoning in November is a clear example of why internet is needed throughout the city. And using this economic development funds is a great way to help fund it. Hopefully, after this first project gets completed, we can use more of those funds to expand throughout the city. Just like to thank everyone. The only other thing I had is, is there anyone on from RVIG? I just wanted to make them aware that they still have a piece of equipment sitting alongside BAH. Hopefully, they don't want to get salt on it throughout the winter. That's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. We appreciate the input. The hope is that when this project is completed early next year, well, early next construction season, there will be discussions on how do we expand from here to surrounding areas, and hopefully this motivates other carriers to want to come in and compete as well, so. I think it's been a good project. It was a lot of work getting up to this point and a lot of action all at the last moment, but we appreciate RVIG's commitment to jump in and and get flying on this, get phase one completed, and now we're ready to be looking at phase two, so. We certainly will contact RVIG and make sure they don't lose their equipment here. Anybody else on the public hearing? I'm seeing no one raise their hand. Anybody on the council? Seeing and hearing none, I will close the public hearing on the proposed adoption of business subsidy criteria and proposed granting of a business subsidy agreement. And associated with this, we have two resolutions, resolution 2020-72 and resolution 2020 in need of a dash number. Would anybody care to make a motion on those resolutions?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Ryan?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution requesting the authorizing the use of Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority Funds for the Internet Expansion in the Southwest Quadrant of the City of Now Then.
All right. I have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second it.
A motion and a second. Counsel, any discussion? Seeing and hearing none. All those in favor, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Philan?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
I'd also like to make a motion approving resolution number 2020-72, calling for a public hearing on proposed adoption of the business subsidy criteria and proposing granting of a business subsidy agreement.
And a motion, do we have a second?
I will second that.
And a motion, a second.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, oh, sorry. Is that, was that the, I'm just following along in the packet. Was that the other one that got mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I think it's 2020-73, a resolution, I have my apologies, adopting a criteria for granting of business subsidies.
Oh, that's 72.
That's 72, okay.
I've got 72.
All right.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, the other motion, the other resolution needs a, needs a number assigned by Lori, because I typed it up and so didn't have access to those numbers, so she will have to sign a number.
So Lori, you'll get a number on that, and then that gets sent off to the county as soon as possible?
That was the one, the first one I proposed.
Yes.
So.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second to that one? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Any discussion?
So to clarify, resolution, we need the motion, the resolutions to, for the criteria, to actually grant the subsidy? To be adopted December 8th. There's like several of them wrapped up together. My apologies.
Okay, I'm sorry. So you had 72, 73.
So we need 72 and 73 approved.
Okay. So your motion includes both 72 and 73?
Resolution number 2020-72 and 2020-73.
All right. And did the second include that?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second on resolution 2020-72 and 2020-73. Adopting the business subsidy criteria for granting of a business subsidy agreement. And 73 is resolution adopting a criteria for granting the business subsidies. Any discussion on those? Seeing and hearing none, we will take a roll call vote. Let's do it one at a time, please. Lori, we'll do it 73 first, 72 first, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Philan?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. All right. Well, I believe we've completed our public hearings for tonight.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
We do still need to approve the resolution requesting the comprehensive road and transit funding, which is the one that the strike needs to add the resolution number to.
I thought that's the first one Dan did.
The first one that I made the motion for.
Okay, so, all right, I'm looking at my phone.
It's a subheading there. It's the it says, "Resolution Requesting Comprehensive Road and Transit Funding." He read the the part below that, "Resolution Authorizing Use of Anoka County Housing and Redevelopment Authority Funds for Internet Expansion in Southeast Quadrant of the City of Now Then." So that's what we did. Dash 72.
All right. I just want to make sure that all get approved and it goes to the county first for the morning.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Councilmember Brian?
Just, I just want to make is, is the clerk content that all three resolutions have been moved appropriately and passed appropriately?
That's
I apologize for the confusion.
Counsel, I thought we were going to approve 2020-72 separately from 2020-73, so 2020-72 is approved, and I have not, I don't show 2020-73 yet.
Okay. So we have the, first one was the one without the dash number. And then 72, and now we need to vote, a roll call vote on 73.
Yes.
Thank you, Dan, for clarifying that. Thank you, Lori, for being on top of that, so. The roll call vote on 2020-73.
Councilmember Berg?
Aye.
Philan?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Rainville?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I'm sorry, but I'm still confused here. The two motions, the resolutions 72, 73 are calling for a public hearing on the proposed adoption of a business subsidy. And then 73 is adopting criteria. The one without any numbers is the one that the county needs requesting the funds from them.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
I have moved that motion, the one without the, without the number, that was the first motion that I made, Councilmember Rainville.
Right. So we have voted three times, and I've just spaced one of them off? Is that what's?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I'm trying to look at it on my phone, because I can't look at it on my computer, and I don't have it all on paper. All right, thank you. I just don't want to, you know, find out tomorrow we didn't do.
No, and Lori did acknowledge, we did all three of them, and she understands the one needs a, a number and needs to be sent to the county, and she already acknowledged that, so.
All right. Thank you. My apologies for not keeping it straight.
WebEx calls aren't always the easiest. All right, so we do believe we're through all that. Lori, you agree?
I agree.
All right.
Mayor Pealan?
Councilmember Blake?
Now, this is Planner Stockman.
I'm sorry, Planner Stockman, I wasn't looking.
Before you start planning and zoning items, I was trying to make a comment earlier on the proposed ordinance changes to Mayor, or Councilmember Rainville's RCA for the planning and commission section of our ordinance.
Okay.
And we cannot make that change. It's, it has to be an ordinance format, and it has to be posted on the city's website for at least 10 days. So that will have to be in January. You can do the policies part of it, but not the ordinance part of it.
Okay.
So, so, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
So does, I'm understanding that then this needs to be voted on again in January.
So we'll put it in the correct format, yes, and we'll put it on your January agenda.
And I'm wondering why we weren't told that on Thursday night?
I didn't even, I guess I wasn't even aware at that time you were making the the actual changes. I wasn't, I wasn't aware that this was coming back tonight. I assumed it was January. I wasn't clear on that. So I don't know if that was my error, or if it was added in a short timeframe, or what.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Really, what I proposed tonight is what I had proposed on Thursday night. There was discussion about delay. To my knowledge, it was not agreed upon to delay anything. But it would have been nice had we known that this piece had to wait till January.
Well, I just got this this afternoon, so I'm sorry if it was my fault. But it's, you know, we have to have it in ordinance format.
Well, you did comment it at the workshop on Thursday. We just missed this part of it, I guess. Because you did, you did weigh in, Planner Stockman, on Thursday, so.
Yeah, I know. I remember talking about it. I just didn't think it was going to ordinance this fast. I thought we were gonna look at it, and there was conversation at that time about having the new councilmember Alder's comment on it, so I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
All right. So next item on the agenda. Be the planning and zoning.
So would you like me to give a brief update of the Sans to Be project?
Yeah, is there anything different from what we had on the workshop Wednesday, or last Thursday, and what we got today?
No. The only, the only conversation that's been had was with the city attorney, who would like to amend one of these conditions slightly, but since planning and zoning moved this for your review, conditions 34 and 35 were added. They recommended that the first 63 feet of 199th Avenue be paved and that the city conducts an annual review of the police calls to the property. So those were the two conditions, planning and zoning added. And so if everybody is okay with what they have, I can talk about what Attorney Rupi would like to see. It's regarding items, conditions two and three on page two. So we have Mr. Sans to Be present, Swanson's. I believe Jeff Swanson wanted to speak, if you will allow it. But the attorney's comment was regarding the two IUPs. There's one IUP for the home business, when the house continues to be used as a house, it's like a home extended business. So when that ceases, he would like us to just be more clear. It already states in number two that once converted to a conforming commercial use, it may no longer be used as a residence. But he would like to add, when the home business ceases and the house is no longer used as a residence, when it's 30 days, that it's no longer a residence. Just to be clear, and put sort of a deadline date on that. So 30 days after it's no longer used as a residence, the home occupation would cease. And then I did call North Valley paving to get an idea of what the pavement costs would be for that segment of a road, and they quoted about between $12,000 and $13,000 for two two-inch lifts. And that would not include any base work that needed to be done. So typically Shane, the city engineer, would have a soil boring done to see how deep the base is, and then make sure that that meets our city standards. So, but that is a ballpark estimate for that amount of roadway.
One of the things the attorney had said was, you know, this, this one IUP wouldn't even be necessary if the home occupancy wasn't an issue. They went right to commercial there, that one of these IUPs is unnecessary. Has there been discussion on that, Liz?
I didn't verify with Mr. Sans to Be today. Rick is with us here. Do you have an exact plan, Mr. Sans to Be, for when you want to convert that house to office space? If it's right away, we could do away with a couple of these conditions.
I'm thinking within a year or so. Probably sooner than that. I wasn't gonna do the house first, but now winter's here, so it'll be a spring project.
Okay, so.
We could do away with it.
Well, so if nobody's gonna live there, though, is that what your, your son's not gonna move in?
No, he found something else. It was taking too long.
So if it sits vacant, there's no harm in that? If you
No, there's No, there's, there's heat in there, yeah, it's fine.
Okay, and so, yeah, if it's, if it's not a rental or anything, we could remove those conditions related to the home business portion of it. So then the only IUP you'd be approving would be for that auto sales.
I don't want to get rid of the driveway yet till we get done remodeling or doing what we have to do yet, until, maybe you can put that in there somewhere that, once it turns the commercial, we'll eliminate the driveway to the garage, to the house itself.
Yeah, I think the way written in here was, before you get the certificate of occupancy for the, when the house is remodeled, if the council wants it differently, they could specify that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
To Ms. Stockman, I have two questions. One is, what do we have in writing, the city attorney's opinion?
No, both the mayor and I spoke with him today.
So, so we do not have that in writing?
We do not have that in writing.
Right. And then, second, when you said you spoke with North Valley, the county or the state will do to the right of way, so are you looking from the right of way to 96 feet? Is this $12,000 to $13,000?
No, it's only the 60, 63 feet or, or up to the first driveway, the west.
To the west end, which is a total of 96, but then you take 30 out for the right of way?
Oh, right, right. Oh, yes.
Okay, okay. Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I guess I would like to see the city attorney's right, opinion in writing.
Regarding which specifically, the?
The, the issue with the house and the, living in the house, not living in the house, the variance, not having a variance, extended home occupation versus a vacant and?
The, the variance applies once it goes commercial. So that's, that's, that's a variance requirement from a commercial standpoint. The attorney did say if nobody's, if that's not going to be used as a residence, then it's declared commercial property and can't go back. He did say at this point, the first IUP would not be necessary because it's not, it's no longer considered a residential property. I will confirm that. I do not have that in writing either.
Right, that's true.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville.
I just think if we're going to make a, a decision based on something that the, we're being told the attorney said, we should have that in writing.
I, I do believe that's good practice going forward. Make sure we understand what the question was and what the answer was. But regarding this tonight, I can confirm that if it's not a residence, it's the, the IUP was simply to address the residency portion of that, because it is a residence on a commercial property.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant.
So it's my understanding, even though we don't have this change in writing, we're, is, are we in essence eliminating number two from the, from the findings and the decision? Is that the, if, if, if Mr. Sansby said the house is not going to be no longer used as a residence, is that in essence the change that's being made?
Correct. We could, Mr. Mayor?
Council, or Planner Stockman?
We could delete items, conditions two and three on page two. The only I, the only thing the IUP is for without the house there is for the auto sales. And then the variance for the setback to the side yard. And you know, everything is else is permitted use in that commercial district.
And so though, you know, if you're eliminating two and three, we'd want to just make sure that we state that the, the house has, has been designated commercial property, no longer residential, as, as part of the condition then.
Correct. So if you'd like to amend this and have the attorney review it, you could do that, but that would delay it another month.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant.
I'm just trying to understand Attorney Rupee's intent and if by eliminating number two, I, I agree with your comment about some, some sort of statement saying that, you know, it's, it's a variation of number three, that the house must be converted to commercial use. Is it just literally amending the first sentence to say the house must be converted to a commercial use? And then at no time shall the residence be occupied, and then the rest of that first sentence is eliminated? And then the, the final sentence is eliminated as well about the amended IUP? Or, or we need to say, at no time shall the converted residence be occupied as a residence? Or is that, does that need to be implied? Does that need to be specific in there?
Yes, the ordinance states that it shall, once it becomes commercial use, it can no, never go back to a residence. So I can state that in there with the section reference. And then just the fact that the house is currently vacant and it will be converted to a commercial use. And then state the, the first part I said. So we'll just take out two and three, but we'll add one back in, number two back in.
Which is in essence a reiteration of number three, specif- specifying the house is no longer to be used as a residence?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So that portion of it's taken care of. At, at the time that the building is, is retrofitted, and the driveway will go away once you've done the construction, you need the driveway to get into the house to do constructions. So that will, once it becomes fully operational commercially, you can remove the driveway.
That is correct.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant.
Does that also eliminate, do we need to specifically revoke the IUP then as part of this?
No, because it, the old IUP from the Swanson's went away, will go away when they sell. So this would, would have been a new IUP, but we don't need that one, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So then any references to the IUP can also be removed?
No, these can, it's still an IUP for the auto sales in the C1 district.
Okay.
Two IUPs.
There's two, okay, yep, just clarifying.
Yeah, okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant.
The only other concern I have is the item number, well, the next concern I have is item number 34, requiring the, the applicant to pave the remainder of the road from the western edge of the easterly most driveway to wherever Minda leaves it. This is an added cost for the individual resident and with multiple, multiple properties accessing that road, using that road as well as another commercial property across the street, I do not agree that the, this one property owner should be left liable for the cost of the road extension from blacktop.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake.
I agree with Councilmember Bryant.
If, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant?
If the, if the owner, if the, if all the property owners in that cul-de-sac wish to have the part or all of that road paved or blacktop, then that can be something that can be addressed at a future time.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I agree with Councilmember Brian that we shouldn't place that burden on the, the new property owner or existing property owner. It is something that the, all residents on that road should share in the cost, if indeed they choose to take that step. But I don't think it's fair to burden the business owner, especially again with the business to the north of them, which is also a construction type business with heavy equipment.
All right, any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant.
Sorry, literally just thought of this. I mean, I understand the residents' concern about test drives and going up and down the cul-de-sac, but, and I would, and highly encourage Mr. Sansby to address that with his contracts that he's having with his, with his, his, I would guess you'd call them business partners utilizing that, that space to discourage them at somehow, in some way, shape or form, not to go down the gravel road for test driving. And I certainly, if I was selling cars, I would not be wanting to go that way for test drives.
And I understand that while the, the IUP for the residential occupation is, is not an issue now, the IUP still exists for this business. So the conditions that are applied here must be adhered to, or the IUP goes away. So obviously there is a motivation to, first of all, for us to get the conditions right, and second of all, for Mr. Sansby to make sure that they're adhered to. Because that's, that's his business. If, if the people he brings in there don't adhere, adhere to the conditions IUP, he loses the business opportunity there. He's, he's stuck with a property, so. And, and I will say, you know, one of the things that came up at the public hearing was residents said, you know, we had an IUP on a previous property and nothing was done when there were violations. But to my knowledge, even though there was a, a large packet of, Sheriff's Department reports that was presented at the meeting, I was not aware, I don't know if the council was made aware, staff was made aware, of items that were as conditions for the previous IUP that were being violated. So the question was, why didn't we pull the previous IUP? We weren't aware that conditions weren't being met. And one of the things that city staff is working on right now is to make sure that we have current record of all IUPs and CUPs, including conditions, and that we will be spot checking those conditions and filing any complaints against those conditions. If conditions are violated, that IUP will be brought before the council for remediation or removal. But that's something, previously, we have not had the staffing or the, the computer technology to do, and I think we, we are aware of that and can handle that now.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant?
One more question potentially from Mr. Sansby, and I, I completely understand that as of this date, Sunday sales are not allowed. If by chance state legislature, legislature does make Sunday sales available, is that something that Mr. Sansby would want to allow on this property or need to allow on this property? The reason I bring it up is, do we need, if, if, if he's fine with the conditions being open Monday through Friday and Saturday, then I'm totally okay with it. I'm just making an assumption that if Sunday sales becomes allowed, then he would have to come back in for an amended IUP?
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
Yeah, we can add a clause under the hours of operation that would allow that, should the state law change. I would hate to see him have to come back for that one item.
That's what I was kind of thinking.
If, you know, would you be okay to allow him to do the same as Saturday hours if Sunday were legalized? Which is, you know, cer- within a certain timeframe, but by appointment?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I, I would not be in favor of going to 7:00 PM on, on a Sunday night. I, I would say 5:00 PM. If that's something that Mr. Sansby, Sansby is even interested in, we, I don't know if we've heard from him to say if he's interested in Sunday sales.
That's kind of a big thing there. We don't know if the state will do that. I mean, but a lot of time, you know, I would think if he could, if, if there was a possibility, it'd be like an appointment, you could do it like from noon to five or something, or that would be fine. People don't get moving too early on Sundays as it rolls, but I can see your point too, at seven after five gets pretty late.
Well, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I, I would move then noon to five as suggested by Mr. Sansby for Sunday.
If that comes around, yeah.
If and when.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryant?
90% sure this is the last one. I just was curious if there's any discussion that needs to take place regarding condition number 35, or if that involves more city staff or city, or staff time that we're, we are, is that something that we want to take on? I would think that if there are issues that regarding illegal activity in or around anywhere in the city, that the, the sheriff's department could get involved.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Is that something we can look in the police reports that we get monthly? Calls for service? Calls for service?
Yeah, the calls for service, they, they can give us a breakdown by location and type. I don't know if anybody's been analyzing that at this point.
Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman?
I would recommend that if you would like to see that information, just change the wording a little so that the property owner is required to provide that. It would just be a request to the police department once a year to, to print those calls for service. And it would, you know, at least take the burden off of the city and have him just provide that information. And if there are problems, then we could bring it to council's attention. I don't know what you think of that.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I guess I, I'm questioning, excuse me. How do, are we going to differentiate calls that are thought to be related to the business at the location or that the business is a victim of a car theft? You know, I know that they gave a big packet of You know, I know that they gave a big packet of police calls over what period of time, but unless any of, excuse me, unless any of those reports specifically said that an employee of that business went over and damaged somebody's property, or an employee of that business stole a vehicle off the property and took it away, the property owner can't be held liable for crime that comes into them in that if somebody comes and steals your car, are you liable if it's in your driveway? They have more cars there, but I think we need to be careful on that. I understand neighbors' concerns, but I don't know of that stack of reports, how long it covered, how long of a period of time, or if any of them were truly, other than a theft of a vehicle or something from a vehicle on the property, any of them were really associated with that property.
Mr. Mayor.
Planner Stockman.
Yeah, Councilmember Rainville is very accurate in her statement. There were very few, if any, that originated from that site. I mean, there were some calls made by Mrs. Swanson for, you know, issues of the salespeople being there after hours and and other things, and not vacating, you know, later in the in the sites, in the tenants' use of the site. But yes, hardly any of those were the fault of the Swansons.
And, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
The other thing you you don't want is, you don't want a business not calling in if there is an issue for fear of being penalized because of it. And so I I just think that's kind of a slippery slope there that we need to be very careful of. If the sheriff is seeing calls associated with it, I would assume that he would advise us of that. If neighbors, excuse me, if neighbors have concerns, then they need to call the office. They they had said there were concerns, but it did not look like we had document had any documentation of any concerns about the property. So I I just think we need to be careful on that.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I realize that there was a lot of concerned residents, but are we making this stipulation for other businesses in our community? I mean, sort of seems like we're sing- sing- singling out one business here. I question that.
I think the sensitivity, understanding the neighbors' concerns is is what's unique here is, in other parts of town where we have a a commercial district, you don't have residences in the middle of it. And because we have a cul-de-sac there with residential out on the highway, all those residents are going by the commercial property, and if there has been disruptive activity in the past, they're all very sensitive to it. So combination of the Highway Department not putting in the apron like they should have, or they bring the road, makes the road travel more noticeable. Certainly, some of the practices of of people test driving or parking cars down in the cul-de-sac where they are doing things that they don't want seen in public. You know, it's it's the combination of this type of business in the middle of a residential area that makes it more sensitive and more problematic. So I I do think the the residents' concern needs to be addressed. Mr. Sonsby is is declaring that he's going to much improve the outward appearance of the property, will be adhering to the conditions, and so the proof will be in the pudding that the residents will see the the improvement. If not, if Mr. Sonsby doesn't abide by the conditions, the residents' complaints will be noted, and and the IUP will be in jeopardy. So I think there's motivation all around for improvement, but I think as a council, we need to be sensitive for those people who want a quiet residential home out in now then, and they're on a cul-de-sac, so their only way in and out is here. And anything that happens on that corner into the end of the cul-de-sac is right in their front yard. So it it's legitimate, it's a it's a unique problem, I think, because of the, probably when that district was set up, that wasn't the best area to to make commercial. But it is designated commercial, and so this is a permitted use as well, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Laurie, we got you at first there.
I have a resident that asked if they could make a comment.
Dangerous, because it isn't a public hearing, but we will entertain one.
Okay.
Who do we have? Are they still with us, Laurie?
I see that he's on, looks like he's available now. Here we.
Hey, Roy. Hey, Roy, you're, we're only getting half your words here, Roy. So we're getting about half your sentence.
I got the message. I can just read what Roy had had asked to be said, if that's okay with council.
Okay.
His message says he wants to point out that the people don't tattle on neighbors. Sue is no longer a neighbor, and Rick is not a neighbor. He made a comment that nobody complained, he is not a neighbor, and I think you will, hang on, I think you will have complaints. That's it.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
I don't understand. He'll have complaints from who?
I think what what he's saying is.
They don't, they didn't, they didn't say anything against Sue because she was a neighbor, but now that someone's going to be in charge of the property who isn't a neighbor, they'll feel free to complain? Is that what we're saying?
I, that's the gist of what I got.
Okay. But there's a good possibility that Rick is going to run a different kind of business than the one that was being run before that they were so upset with, and that they may not be as disappointed in it if he abides by and seems to want to run a a more upright situation, if I don't have better words.
And and I I do think that that obviously there's thirty-some conditions that if the the complaints are specific to violations of the conditions, you know, it's it's imperative they be immediately corrected, or, as as we say, the IUP is in jeopardy. So there are there are teeth in it. You have an owner who understands that and understands the potential, and so is motivated to to run a different operation than was running there before. Ideally, if the residents didn't even realize it was there, you know, again, that the type of business being online, there is that potential that it's it's relatively quiet. But again, the proof's in the pudding. The residents have to live there, and and I understand commercial properties on the edge of your property, it does. You want to be good neighbors, give them no reason to complain. Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
You know, and I I don't, I I'm not saying that the neighbors don't have concerns, but again, this is a, as Linda said, this is a new business owner going in, and we are going to assume that he is going to run a professional business. I checked with another city that he has businesses such as this in, and they've not received complaints. So that was, I I was happy to hear that. You know, again, we can't assume that the conditions or the vi- potential violations occurring previously will occur again. And Mr. Sonsy- Sonsby has been party to all of these, excuse me, been party to all of these conversations and has heard what the neighbors are saying, and I think he probably is taking that to heart and is going to want to be a good neighbor.
Other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Even if Mr. Sonsby did not move into this area, there would probably be someone else down the road who would want to purchase this property, operate their business, and if we just keep turning them all away, what's the point of having commercial property over there?
I I think that's the question the residents are all asking, but, you know, somebody has to buy it, you know, if it could be converted back to residential if somebody wants to buy it and and pay the fee to change the comp plan, but for right now, it is designated on the comp plan as commercial property, you're correct. Other comments? Seeing and hearing none, it's time to take action. Do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I move that the council approve the application for the use of the interim use permit to allow used out, used auto sales, and a ten-point-two-foot variance from the one-hundred-foot buffered requirement on PID two-four-three-three-two-five-three-four-zero-zero-zero-two, and that all of the facts and findings and conditions, one through thirty-five. Actually, would it be one through thirty-four now, because we're removing the the one?
Correct.
Yes, so the conditions one third through thirty-four are met.
And may I?
Yeah. Planner Stockman.
May I ask, Councilmember Rainville, does that include deleting thirty-five, or does that keeping item thirty-five?
I would delete thirty-five.
Okay. Point of clarification, should we be doing the variance in the IUP separately? Because we didn't really talk about the variance in screening, because at the time, we weren't talking about screening because it was going to stay residential property, but turning it into a commercial property immediately, we didn't need to talk about the variance and potential screening there. So I'd like to separate those two, if it's possible, Councilmember Rainville.
I I would be fine with that, Mr. Mayor. So how, okay, do we have to go through then and figure out which of these decisions are based on the one and the other one?
I think you need to do the IUP first, so that there's approval of the business, and then you address the variance on the commercial property set based on screening.
Right, so, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Ms. Stockman, if we're gonna, if this isn't going to be a residential home, oh, it's the screening on the east or the west side of that house, that property, never mind. Let's split it.
May I make one comment, Mr. Mayor?
Planner Stockman, yes.
You, yeah, regarding the landscaping, you received a plan which showed the aerial photo and then two photographs of the the existing trees along that west side, is that correct?
Correct.
And then, but were there not green arrows on the aerial photo part of it? Because I believe part of it didn't print properly. So I had, I actually proposed, had created a landscape plan with three evergreen trees to be either spruce or white pine or cedar to kind of fill in the blank space that you see in the the lower, the photo on the lower left. There's where you can see through to Mr. Day's property. I worked with Mr. Sons to be to to plant three evergreen trees in that location, and he was agreeable to that.
Yeah, when I drove by, though, it is pretty open, and you certainly see the day property pretty clearly from the parking area in the commercial area. I'm I'm not sure three would be enough, but I think you'd certainly want to stagger them so that had some in front of the others. But it's a, when I looked at it, if I was living in the day property, I'd want a fence, but I do think there needs to be some buffer there.
I looks, it's pretty thick up by the house, though, but there's that one section that gets, I'm going to try to share my screen and put this landscape plan up here, okay?
Okay.
See what happens.
While you're working on that, let's let's deal with the motion on the IUP first, because that has really to do with the commercial variance there, so. Councilmember Rainville, you were making a motion?
Yes, I I move that we approve the interim use permit for auto sales at fifty-three, forty, one-hundred-ninety-ninth Avenue Northwest, interim use permit to allow outdoor auto sales at PID two-four-three-three-two-five-three-four-zero-zero-zero-two, based on the facts and findings provided by our planner Liz Stockman. But we would be, I would recommend that we would remove number thirty-five. And per our discussion, we are removing either two or three, so everything else would be kept, and then the Liz will put in verbiage for the change of the house from residential to commercial.
And then add the hours from twelve to five Sunday if the state law changes.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Greenberg.
I heard some comments earlier about that sixty-three feet being paved as being one of the conditions. A few council members said some things about that. Could there be some clarification, what's going to happen with that? Is indeed Mr. Sons to be going to be responsible for the sixty-three feet then, to pave that?
Mr. Mayor, my, that was my error. Thank you, Councilmember Greenberg. Now, we're also removing, I would move that we would remove condition thirty-four. Thank you for catching that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, other discussion. I think I think one of the the mistakes we made last time was, you know, when we allowed the commercial business to go in there. the commercial business to go in there, to Burns Auto and the property to the north, that as a city, we failed to take the opportunity there to say, you're going to be using this residential road for commercial purposes. This would be the appropriate time to get it paved. So I would be in favor of making sure it's paved at least back to the first driveway. Working with it, I would like to see that if there's any negotiation with MinDOT, since they have a right-of-way setback on the north that's significantly further back than on the south, that at least they would go back to their north right-of-way so that the cost would be reduced to get that paved right to the driveway in question. But that would be my comment. The spruce trees or the cedar, I'm not sure white pine would cover much. Maybe initially it would, but certainly that is a wide-open area when the deciduous trees have lost their leaves. So I think I wouldn't mind seeing one more evergreen in there. But again, that's up to the total council, so.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
Yeah, I, you know, if, if, if more than three trees are needed, I'm, I'm okay with Councilmember Rainville is, I don't know how we would put an amendment in there, but I mean, if, if we're meeting city code for, for screening, then we are, then, then we're in good shape and maybe we can do a little more, but go ahead.
I, you know, maybe this really has to do with the variance. We've got it on the screen now, so I'm thinking about it, but I'm not sure if it's part of the IUP or part of the variance, but.
Yeah, this is more part of the variance, yes.
I withdraw that until we talk about the variance. But I do think this is the prime time to work with the state and figure out something to get that paved back to the driveway. Other comments? Seeing and hearing none, we will take a roll call vote on the motion.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
Melon.
No.
Councilmember Rainville.
No, Greenberg.
I thought I already voted.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Motion passes, four in favor, one opposed. Now we'll talk about the variance. The variance would come into play because this is now going to be a commercial property, no longer residential, so it comes into play right away. Variance is for just over 10 feet from the setback on a commercial property. And this is where it'd be appropriate to talk screening. Liz, you want to say anything on that?
Oh, sure, the, so each of the three trees proposed would be, you know, 20 to 25 feet across. If you want to add one more, I think that's acceptable.
I'd go for at least four. Other comments on the variance?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I'm, I'm fine with going four. Do we have any, so they have to be, am I reading your notes, Liz, that it would be four six-foot installed, six-foot tall trees installed at this time?
Correct, that is our minimum, our ordinance, right. It went at the planting, time of planting.
And they have to survive a year, is it?
Yeah, the, correct, they have to, well, they really have to survive continually and that, we can add that as a condition if it's not in there, that it be maintained. I believe it's in there that the plantings within the buffer zone between the house and the west lot line have to be maintained. If something dies, you need to plant a new one or more.
Where is that variance language, Liz?
I'm just looking here, too.
I don't see it in the packet.
Number eight, well, I'm looking at the same conditions. It's the same list of conditions here for the IUP. So, number eight is addressing the landscaping. Buffer yard is maintained at all times, including existing trees and shrubs.
Number 10 is the landscape plan.
Right, so that's where I'll specify the four trees and the minimum size. And then you see in number 11 that they all have to be maintained throughout the life of the business and shall be replaced when they become disease-damaged or destroyed.
So I'm sorry, I got distracted. Did we have a motion in a second on that?
No, no. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
I would make a motion to approve the variance for an 86.8-foot buffer yard setback.
89.8?
Yeah, 89.8.
Okay, I'm referring to the number above decision, in the decision on page two. So if that needs to be corrected to be 89, then I would recommend we make that change. I'll make a motion to approve the 89, was it 89.2 or the 10-foot? How long is it? I don't have it in front of me.
10.2-foot variance.
10.2-foot variance, okay, yeah. The, the total foot buffer yard setback value number must be incorrect then.
Yep, sorry.
Do we need, no problem, do we need to restate the conditions for the variance for the setback or the setback is separate and doesn't need the other conditions?
Why don't you just say amending condition 10, which references the variance because it'll just be the one set of conditions?
It's the one set of conditions for the variance. So that, and that the applicant shall work with the zoning administrator presenting a landscape plan to provide screening where existing trees are lacking at the west property line.
So the way I quoted it, Councilmember Bryan, was that four six-foot evergreen trees shall be planted to be either spruce, white pine, or red cedar along the western lot line to fill in the sparse areas. So that'll be the required landscaping.
Okay.
I would second that.
Motion to second, other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, I'll do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Mayor Plon.
Aye.
Councilmember Blake. Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan.
Aye.
Thank you very much, that was nice work.
Before I forget about it, you know, as Planner Stockman brought up our oversight on that previous issue on the commission and the needing to post the ordinance, I'd make a motion to have the council, have the staff post that on the website effective tomorrow for a 10-day notice.
I would second that.
Motion to second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Blake.
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan. Member Bryan.
He's left the building.
Aye, no.
Member Melon.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg.
Aye.
Aye.
Aaron Council, can I just make a quick comment on that?
Yes.
The topic that was very confusing and I, with my notes from our workshop, was under the understanding that it got moved to January, so that was not, she did not know until today that it was actually put back on today, and I didn't know until today as well. It's my misunderstanding with the workshop.
Yeah, I think the, the question was if that was a requirement, one of the reasons we have workshops is to get those things, those types of things, you know, if, if there's something we need to know, it's just helpful. Man, we're not trying to blame anybody, it's just helpful that, to have that discussion at the workshops thing. By the way, there are conditions you need to make sure you're adhering to, but we missed it and it's been a hectic week, it's, so. But thank you for clarifying that, Lori, I appreciate that, so. We're pushing three hours in and we got people on the line waiting here. We still got one, two, three, four, five, six, eight items. The people need a stretch break.
Mayor.
Councilmember Blake.
Are we quitting at nines as you suggested we would be doing?
Well, we said we want to start new business. We'll have to decide what can be tabled at that point, so.
I think we should consider what should be tabled at nine, it's three hours that we'll be in. So, and there's way too many things that we're going to ever get through and.
Then I'm going to recommend if the council, if that's their preference, we take a look at, because we have people here from the Brian's Bend Plant and Cars Tree Service, and the recycle agreement has to be done this week. So the council's, I would say that we amend and do the recycle agreement first because that's a deadline that's due this week, and then go into the Brian's Bend and Cars Tree Service and see what time it is. The other things could be, could be tabled.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
I, I agree wholeheartedly and I was going to recommend that.
All right, council okay with that rearrangement? Okay, I see a thumbs up?
Yes.
All right. So let's go to the recycle agreement.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
As this is a time-sensitive document, I would move, or motion that the council, excuse me, council approves the contract and directs staff to report back at the February 9, 2021 council meeting or sooner via memo if they are able to, documenting who will be responsible for seeing that the individual conditions stipulated in the contract are carried out. And I would like to go, going forward, see quarterly progress reports as far as what's happening with the, with the recycle center in May, August, and November. If I could get a second.
So just a clarification, I'll, I'll second it. A clarification of the, of the motion here, so you're asking for a lifting of the specific criteria that's in that contract, and there's quite a bit that's required. So you're asking to provide a list and who would be responsible for that? And then quarterly reports, did you specify months, did you say?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Yes, as you said, specific list, there are numerous requirements. I want to make sure that we are, I, I'm assuming we've always met those requirements, but I want to make sure that we have documentation showing we're meeting the requirements of the contract with the county because one of the issues is if we don't, we have to pay the money back. And I don't like to pay money back.
I'm, I'm not certain if, you know, maybe I didn't see all the contracts in the past, but it seems like there's a lot of conditions on this. I don't remember in previous contracts, so maybe I wasn't paying attention, but.
No, I think the more, when I look back at previous contracts, they're, they've always been there.
Okay.
The months, I'd like to have a report back as to where we are on those items would be, it would basically be quarterly, but if we're not, we'll get our first report in February and then May, August, and September council meetings.
May, August, and September or November?
I did, I'm sorry, November.
And, and, you know, like I said, I maybe wasn't paying attention to the conditions in the past, has there always been the clawback that if we didn't meet them, they'd take the money, we'd have to pay the money back? Okay, I missed that.
That has been in there.
Okay. Councilmember Blake, were you going to say something?
Yeah, we talked about hiring someone to work in the recycling program. Could that person that we hire help carry out these requirements? And they would be the one who maybe instead of laying this at Lori's feet, maybe they would be the one that would help do the reporting that Mary wants.
That's, that's quite possible, I mean, that certainly would be up to Lori to designate.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Rainville.
Yes, that would be up to Ms. Strick as to how she would do it. I'd also, I mean, I am willing to help with everything also. If there is another council member that would be willing to assist with that, I'm sure Ms. Strick would be, would be okay with that. I'm speaking for her, so I shouldn't probably do that. But I think if we, if we share the, share the burden, it will be much easier to get everything taken care of. The other thing I want to do is in the contract, that before it gets sent in, is that it be corrected to reflect the correct signatures as to the city. Typically, the mayor signs it and then beneath the mayor is Ms. Strick's signature. And the copy I have has, does not have the mayor's signature on it, and I think that should be corrected.
Mayor, I just looked back at, at previous contracts and they were all signed by the city clerk, so I just repeated what's been sent in in the past, but we can make that change.
All right, thank, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Bryan.
In the interest of time, is it possible that the mayor, that Councilmember Rainville would amend her motion just to approve the agreement now and the enforcement and potential reporting on the program be tabled for another meeting?
So that gives, so that. I was just going to call for a vote. Would that hang things up if we call for a vote as, as motioned?
Knowing that we haven't, and maybe, maybe I'm wrong, but we haven't had a conversation with staff on potential, on what, how things could be reported, and what, how that would all, should all be laid out so that if it can be done, in my, I would say yes.
Councilmember Rainville?
I would be willing to accept amendment and just move that we agree to the, that we contract from the county submitted to them. But what I am then going to ask is that, like a February workshop be held to deal specifically with the recycling center. I, I thought our December workshop was going to be about the recycling center. January, we'll have a lot of stuff on the calendar, so I would like a February workshop, and we can talk hours, the requirements of the contract, who's going to make sure that those requirements are done. So I would, I would amend my motion to accept contract from the county, sign it, send it back. I have a second to that, which I think I did, and then I will make a second motion.
All right, I second to that. So any other comments on that? Saying and hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Pealan? I'm sorry, Mayor Pealan?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan?
Aye.
Five ayes, motion carries. Councilmember Rainville?
Then, Mr. Mayor, I would move that we set a February workshop for the Thursday before the council meeting to discuss the recycling center, staffing, revenues versus expenses, and the adherence to the contract.
All right, we got a motion? Our workshop in February?
Second.
Motion, motion and a second?
I deny that second.
That was a quick one, Dan. All right, discussion.
For the record, I waited.
You gave other people a chance. Any discussion from the council? Saying and hearing none, roll call vote.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan? Pealan?
Aye.
Councilmember Greenberg?
Aye.
All right. Brian's Bend Plant?
No, ordinance.
Mayor Pealan?
I said, I, who's that? Planner Stockman? No, Linda, just for Linda, we're jumping these so we get our nine o'clock deadline.
Oh.
We're looking at the ones, we're looking at the ones we can table versus the ones we got people sitting in the audience for.
Okay, and we can table RRT rural residential?
Yeah, that would be all right.
Okay.
So Brian's Bend will be quick, and then I would propose that we finish on cars and just give them a little bit of feedback because there's a land deal waiting on that. Brian's Bend, since you received the memo, this is requesting your input on how the island is designated and maintained. Since the memo went out on the first of December, the applicants have said that they're fine with the city just maintaining right away, and the island treating that like a ditch section, so that it would just be native grasses planted there like a ditch section. It is still a depressed area that does collect rainwater, and the city maintenance personnel can push snow to the middle, but they've eliminated all the plantings to make maintenance a non-issue. So the staff, including your city engineer and city attorney, are in favor of this arrangement.
So let me ask, you're talking about if you maintain like roadside cutting.
Right.
Because it's a cul-de-sac, I mean, the reason we maintain the roadside cutting is visibility. I was driving out there today, and would it be critical if the city didn't mow it?
No, I don't see that as an issue in a cul-de-sac. I think.
Again, if you, if you put in prairie grasses or pampas grasses or something like that, I mean, it would be attractive. It would still provide the drainage, but I think the mowing is for visibility, and it's a nice wide cul-de-sac. I don't know that visibility would be that critical. I'm guessing homeowners wouldn't mind the view being blocked from the other cul-de-sac, if you will, so.
Right, or, you know, if, if they really wanted to mow it, they could mow it themselves just as other people maintain up to our paved edge.
Correct.
You know, that wouldn't be an issue, big issue, so.
Yep. So as, as it's laid out, I mean, it's pretty clearly that the low area there and the drainage over to the overflow retention pond is in place. So I think that not obligating the city to do anything on it, but, but letting the residents maintain it as long as it continues to drain water, and as long as nobody plants something in there that they're worried if the snowplow pushes snow in there, we're good.
Right, we're not requiring them to do it, and we're not going to do it on a regular basis, but you still have at least a natural area that breaks up some of that asphalt.
Yep, I thought it looked pretty nice.
Good.
Any other council input on that?
Mr. Mayor?
The key is that the city will not be obligated for maintenance. Councilmember Rainville?
I'm just wondering, is there anything that, you said that you've talked to the attorney, did he, do we have any intention that says we're not doing anything?
Um, Mayor Pealan?
The attorney advised us very clearly not to do anything. Do not obligate the city for future obligations. And there were a number of iterations that Mr. Brown had recommended, and I think he and the attorney have, have probably spent more time together than either of them cares to admit right now, and, but the attorney was very adamant that do not obligate the city for maintenance. So I think the proposal that I saw today covers that very well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just, there's been a lot of work done on the developers agreement, Ms. Rainville, and we were just waiting on this one last item to, so we could get that to you for your review.
All right, thank you very much.
All right. Will the council allow a few minutes more for a brief discussion on cars? And then a couple of closing arguments? Are closing good with the group? I see two thumbs up.
Mr. Mayor, do you officially need to table those other items or continue to next month?
Um.
Or not? Or they can just be pulled?
Yes, I, I think since they're on the agenda, we should table them. So take a motion to table 8B ordinance 2020-1, 8D ordinance 2020-3, 8E snow removal, on-street parking.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Bryan?
So moved.
We have a second. A second from Linda. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor of tabling the motion, or in favor of the motion of tabling the items? Roll call vote, please. I read her lips, she.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Bryan?
Aye.
Councilmember Rainville?
Aye.
Mayor Greenberg?
Aye.
All right, tree service?
Yeah, Mayor Pealan, just briefly, so this is a five-acre property owned by the McCallums on Highway 47. That kind of backs up to Mr. Raissler's RRT area. So the struggle that Cars is having is trying to find a location in the city. There's a lack of available industrial sites, so this one came up, and he wanted to get your opinion. It is a fairly difficult site. It's heavily vegetated with three wetlands and the pipeline that runs through there. So about the back third of it is unusable. The question is, well, through an interim use permit process, he can have landscape, there are landscape companies and service-oriented businesses allowed, I'm sorry, those are permitted uses. So outdoor storage is the interim use required for, which would be required for the piling of the brush and such. And then the other question would be the building size. If the minimum building size is 2,000 square feet, if they did not want a building that large, that would either be a variance or they could totally forego a building and build a parking lot on the front side that is paved and curbed as necessary, and then have some screening and brush on the backside. So just looking for your input on this, because since there is, would be variances involved, it's, you know, it's not on a main corner, but yet, you know, it is commercial and not industrial, but there's not a lot of other places to locate at this time.
I think the, the building issue, one of the things they wanted was a place they could do some interviews. There is some rental property just north of there, and Norgren's had some office space available. If they, that's really what they were looking for is an office they could rent. That's a possibility and forego the building. I'm not real anxious to put a smaller building on there and open up that precedent. It is an extremely wooded lot. I don't know how much they would take down. It's got the farmhouse right next to it, and the deep ditch on the north. And while there is a buffer in the back of commercial, I don't know who's, who's going to develop that. There will be houses right behind them eventually. So I don't know if anybody else got over and looked at the site. I appreciate that it's probably hard to sell for anything else commercially. The problem we had with Cars previously was they were trying to put a, a commercial-type operation or industrial-type operation in a residential zone. These, this at least is more appropriate to what they're doing, and currently all their trucks are sitting on the corner of 5 and 22 anyway, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
How close is this going to be to a residential area? Because the residents were up in arms about the noise and all that in the other site. How close will this be to a residential area?
If you take a look at your, your memo there on the front page?
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
The yellow is residential. So there's that little strip of buffer, the buffer there that's considered a commercial, that isn't part of this property, but the, the yellow is residential. So it would be right up against that residential. That being said, those people buying those homes do understand that they're buying, abutting a commercial district.
And the pipeline, Mr. Mayor, runs through there. I don't know if Ms. Blake can see that, and.
Is that the black?
Yeah.
That's, that's the dotted line.
That's the side.
So which side, okay, are they, is it the red that they're buying?
Black.
The black? Yeah, they're, they're the black square.
That's it?
Five acres, and lower.
And so this pipeline goes right through this black square?
Yep.
Correct.
And they, they can build up onto the, where the pipeline is?
Right. Nor could there be a house on the pipeline behind it. So.
Yeah.
I, I think realistically, the residences are going to be farther to the east, but nonetheless, you know, the, the minimum requirement is 100-foot buffer in our ordinance from commercial use to a residential lot. So to the south and the north, they're fine with abutting commercial uses?
Right.
It would just be to the east and then across 47 where there would be houses.
And currently to the south, you do have a, you do have a house. So right now, per ordinance, as I understand it, we still would have that screening in place.
Because even though it's a commercial district, it's, it's been a residence and hasn't ever been changed from that.
Yeah, it depends how it reads. In some places, it reads district and zone, district, and others it reads uses. So I'd have to verify that.
Verify it. I think the council would prefer uses, just from a idea that we're not forcing somebody out that.
Yeah, right. I think that's the guy that's got the illegal storage business.
I was going to ask you about that big sign out in front of his place.
Yeah. But I do, yeah, it does say on page two at the very top, storage areas fenced and screened from neighboring residential uses. So that would apply then.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
So please refresh my memory. If they choose not to construct a, a building, are they allowed to just open storage on a commercial lot?
Yes, they, through an interim use permit, they can have open storage as a principal use, provided it meets all the screening requirements, and you could attach, you know, other conditions to it potentially.
So to clarify, without an IUP, they couldn't do outdoor storage?
Correct.
Thank you. I, I'm with, I'm with the mayor as far as going down to a smaller building. I understand the lot has some difficulties, but I don't want to set precedent.
Any other council comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor? Councilmember Greenberg?
Uh, Liz Stockman, what would be the smallest building they could go to other than this 12 by 24?
Uh, well, the minimum is 2,000 square feet in a commercial and industrial zone.
What if we just made that the criterion? If they want a building, they go with that 2,000 foot, or they don't have a building at all?
Yep, that works, and then.
That's what I think we're saying, yeah.
Yep, that works for me. And then the only other outstanding question is, would you allow the back part of this to be gravel? Because that, the idea that a principal use would be sale for storage was based around auto sales, but this is obviously not auto sales, and it's more storage, and we do allow a lot of our storage areas to be gravel. So that would be, that would be one variance in the commercial zone that is different from the industrial zone. But so there would be, if they met the minimum building size, they'd still would have to ask for the IUP for the storage, and then a variance for the gravel. ask for the IUP for the storage and then a variance for the gravel. Um. Storage surfacing. But you would have the ability to establish conditions to screen it well if you wanted to.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
Liz, will there be? Will we have conditions on the hours and when they can use their machines? I mean, wasn't this all part of the other issue? That, I mean, they're not that far from a residential area, they're not going to want to be listening to things at ten o'clock at night or three, five in the morning, you know?
Yeah, no, that's a good point, yes, as part of that interim use permit, you will have the ability to attach conditions.
Okay.
Right.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Greenberg?
Well, I know the last time, um. We had kind of said, because you're not in a commercial district. Uh, we didn't really want car tree service or we didn't think it was appropriate for that zoning, um, and we suggested that a commercial district would be more appropriate, so I see this as a, a great solution.
Turn it up.
All right, any other comments? You're, you're gonna have something whenever you have commercial districts up against residential, it's same thing we just went through with the car sales, it's it's commercial district up against residential, but the difference here is these, these people buying those properties will know what's existing there before they buy, so. The other people have been living there, you know, in the southeast, they've been living there for a long time and it wasn't a commercial district, so it just wasn't a fit, so. Anything else? I'd give, uh, no guarantees, but clear direction, Liz?
So it sounds like you'd be open to that surfacing variance then? If it were back, farther back on the lot, not visible from, uh, Highway forty-seven?
Council think that's reasonable?
I think that's reasonable.
We always want to be careful of precedent, that somebody else doesn't come in and basically everybody's doing the same thing, cause one guy got it, but if we can write it up in such a way that it's, uh, unique to this location. I think the pipeline will certainly play into that.
Yeah.
So I think you need to identify the uniqueness as to why this one would get a variance and other people wouldn't.
Right, and I, I think the use in and of itself is unique as well.
Yep. Between the use and the pipeline, I mean, the pipeline really just divides that property almost in half, so it's it is very limited.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else from the council? Good enough for you, Laner Stockman?
Yeah, that sounds great, I appreciate your input there.
All right.
So, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
With table those, postpone those items, the two work looked at are the, um, for the greater good. And I'm wondering if council would be willing to just, it shouldn't take more than a couple of minutes on either one of these. Um, one is the lion sign, um, Judy Perilla put in, and then the other is the league training.
Council? I got one thumbs up. And another reluctant thumbs up.
Go ahead.
Dan, Dan, you're okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, so the lion sign. We've all seen a picture of it, do we know where they're gonna put it? Hmm. Instead they're gonna maintain it, is this gonna be in front of the building, near the door, in the park, in the?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I don't have the ques, answer to that question. Um, Judy would be placing them, I'm sure they're just gonna be in a visible location. Um. Or that, uh, it was out of the, you know, chance of getting hit by a car. Um. But I think that, uh. It, it's no, what did she say, it's, um. Oh, she gave us the dimensions on it, it's just a little, like, a little lawn sign ones, so it's not a big sign. Um. We could ask her, we could ask Ms. Strike to ask her where she thinks on the property she would, um. Place the signs. I, I think that was a nice idea, I think it's it shows community and community spirit.
Mayor and council, I have the email from Judy that was, at one time included in the packet, and I don't know if, it doesn't look like it's in my packet, her original email. And she's stating that she would like to have the signs located at the City Hall building, the historic City Hall.
Oh, yeah, I remember that.
And I, I guess I'm just, I was assuming that's the location, maybe she wants them at the city offices since everybody calls the building something different, so she just said City Hall.
And, and we keep saying signs, is it one sign or multiple signs or?
She said in her, nope, go ahead.
It says one of these signs at City Hall.
Go ahead, Lori.
Semi-permanently, meaning it would be taken care of. Why, I think probably on the south side towards the parking lot. Rather than out in front of the building. But. So I think, I think the, the council, the general idea is good, finalize the location. Uh, before installation. Is that okay with the council?
That's, Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian, I just said yes here.
Sign pla, yeah, sign placement is fine with me, I'm just wondering if, if Judy and Lori can just work that out and.
Yes.
Go from there.
Good. All right. Rainy?
Mayor and council, I add this into the packet for the greater good with, uh, council member Alders joining in January, I'm wondering if I'm able to set him up for this training? The cost would be a hundred and seventy-five dollars and it would begin January nineteenth through February twenty-sixth. And is in the packet on, on the details of the meeting, the training.
And actually, uh, working with the league, this, this training is foundational, though, so instead of saying newly elected, they've switched to foundational. And so they are actually saying, uh, this is good for people with less than two terms on the council. Um, so if other council members wanted to avail themselves of this, uh, certainly be an opportunity as well. It is online, it is, uh, live in a number of cases, but there's two times per day that gets shown. The league also has, uh, for experienced members, the advanced program for ninety-five dollars. Uh, it's a is also going to start in, I think in February. So we can, um, bring that one up next time. So council, okay with, um. Authorizing the training?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Brian?
Yeah, I'm all for it, I just wanted to, just to clarify, this isn't like a weekend thing or a all day long, different Zoom or web meeting sessions, it's spread out over six weeks, so just, it's just, so if anyone else wanted to go, it's just a little different than previously with the current times, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Blake?
If I read it right. There each, there are different days, but it's two to three hours each time, right?
Uh, it's, it's up to two hours, there's total of nine hours for six sessions. No, no session goes more than two hours.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Um, I, I just want to confirm that we are, um, this is also, um. Open to, say, councilmember Greenberg or councilmember Blake, if we're talking to somebody with less than two terms on.
Correct.
Okay.
They, they said it would be beneficial.
Yeah, all right, thank you. I'm fine.
Council, council member, well. Mayor Peelon, I've gone my last couple of years, two terms in, in the last two, two years, it, it is helpful.
Okay, so other comments, we will offer it to, uh. Jason Alders. Uh, if councilmember Blake or Greenberg would like to avail themselves. Uh, I would ask you to get ahold of Lori and the council approves, if they want to attend online, approves the payment. So. Motion to approve the payment for, uh. Uh. Three council members for the foundational. And then we can talk about additional for the, uh. Advanced course. Uh, later. I would move, move that we approve up to, uh. Three members to attend the foundational.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
I'd second that.
All right, and motion in a second, any other discussion? Seeing and hearing none, roll call vote please.
Councilmember Blake?
Aye.
To member Greenberg?
Aye.
To member Rainville?
Aye.
Councilmember Brian?
Aye.
Mayor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Rainville?
Uh, before we move to adjourn, I would like to, um. Just say to Dan O'Brien, or not O'Brien, Dan Brian.
Wrong guy.
Uh, we are gonna miss you, Dan. Um, you have really, um, provided good quality input to this council. You've been diligent in anything that you've brought forward or any tasks that you took on. And, um, we're really gonna miss you, I want to thank you for all you taught me. And, uh, hopefully we will still see you around, you'll still stay as a participant.
You're here.
I agree, and.
We're gonna miss you, Dan.
Amazing, and we're, we're gonna miss you, Dan, very much. All your knowledge and input that has benefited all of us, it's gonna be it's a loss, too bad we couldn't have had a little cake and ice cream for you.
Yeah.
Thank you for the kind words. Go ahead, Jeff.
We can, we can have that cake later. Uh, but, but I do, I do want to, uh. Thank you as well, certainly we have worked together closely and, and with the fire board, the fire protection council, and certainly the fire department this whole last year. I, I know better than most how diligent you've been, how thorough you've been. And, uh, we will miss your contributions greatly, hopefully you will continue to participate in opportunities where they exist. Um. But you have been a, a extremely valuable member of our, our council, I, you know, I, I think of the volunteering, you know, I, your participation in, in recycling without, you know, when you were available during the week and then certainly every Saturday up until recently. Um. You know, it's, it's gone unnoticed, except by the people stopping into the recycling. Um. And so your diligence is, is has been quiet, but incredibly, uh, helpful to the city. And you've been a very valuable member of this council, and I, I agree, we will miss you. And look forward to continuing to work with you in some capacity going forward, so.
Thank you again for the kind words, I also want to thank the residents for giving me the opportunity to serve my city that I've lived in practically all my life for the last four years.
They're gonna miss you also.
I will say just briefly that, uh, one other thing here. Uh, St. Francis did approve unanimously our agreement on the fire department. And probably tomorrow, the chief will be meeting with the Station Three firefighters, he's working that out with Chief Conner, uh, today. And, uh, we will start the progress. We will get a timeline, thirty sixty ninety day timeline, and we'll see where we go from here. But, uh. That has, has gone forward, so I also want to, uh, in that, now that we have a, a relationship and, uh, the contracts will be signed this week, I understand, by both parties. Um, I want to thank Jerry, uh, Strike and Capstone for all the consulting they did with us, you know, Dan and I. Um. And Lori, as we started out, realized how important it was going to be to have a, a good consultant, and Jerry is one of the best, I mean, he led us through, um. A real maze of things and, and his advice to us. Um, and his assistance as our emergency manager has, has been extremely valuable to us as well, so we'll miss him, but we accepted his resignation. Uh, and our emergency management will now be part of the responsibility with the, uh, chief in St. Francis. And so, uh, again, we wish Jerry well. I'd like to say in his retirement, but he's busier now than probably was before, so. So we appreciate that as well, so. That said, um. I think that's good for the good of the group, so.
Yeah, I move to adjourn.
I second.
We are adjourned, thank you all very much.
Night, everyone.
Night.
Night.
Merry Christmas to all, if we don't talk before then, so.
Good night, John.
All right. Hey Linda, I got some of your cookies today.